Started here tonight. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast through the local media outlets present. If anyone would like to obtain a copy, please contact a member of the school committee or administration. Our first order of business is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Milford School Committee meeting held April 27th, 2017? Motion from Scott, seconded from Mike, all in favor? Thank you. And next order of business is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Do I have any announcements, correspondence, or distributions?
Just, I mean, Mr. Chairman, just want to congratulate certainly all of our newest inductees into the National Honor Society, and certainly to the seniors as they sort of pass that along to the junior class that are about to turn that page and become seniors. So congratulations to our newest members.
Thank you, Scott. Kevin, do you have anything?
I do not tonight, no.
All right, just have a couple of things. Just a reminder that the Stacy Middle School PTO will be hosting their first annual casino night, and that's going to be tomorrow night. Anyone know where that is? The Crystal Room.
Tomorrow night in the Crystal Room.
And then, I see Lisa Burns here. The Memorial School will be hosting a 5K run on May 13th. All ages are welcome to run or walk, and the proceeds will go towards the new playground at Memorial. Any other announcements, correspondence? No? So, next order of business, invitation to speak. Anyone here would like to address the board? Don't see anyone. So, the next item on the agenda is the School Improvement Plan and Family Handbook for Brookside and Memorial. Lisa and Lisa, Rachel, would you like to come up? All right. Which one of you would like to go first?
Hello, everybody. Happy spring. I'll start with the School Improvement Plan. The one thing different that we did at Brookside this year with the School Improvement Plan is that I invited the staff to participate in taking it apart and looking at it and seeing what they felt was usable or was appropriate for moving forward in the 2017-2018 year. If they felt that things that no longer needed to be in there, they wanted to add some new items. So, I took one of the staff meetings in winter, broke them up into groups, and had the chart paper around the room, and they, I had listed what was currently in the School Improvement Plan near the chart paper, and they reviewed what was in there and then added what they would like to see. Some of it was just a list of things that they'd like to see, or that they commented on about, and others was, other things were very valuable to add to the School Improvement Plan that I was able to implement in some of the sections here. That was an interesting experience for me because I've never had the staff participate in the development of an improvement plan, and I feel they are huge stakeholders in implementing that in the school. For standard one, we had Curriculum Planning and Assessment. The format of the plan is a little different, too. Tim Kernan had shared his format with Lisa Burns and I, and it made sense to change the format a little bit to make sure, to make sure it, make it more eye-friendly. And so that was a minor change to the School Improvement Plan. But it breaks it down into the sections under each standard. There are some things that are continuing to be ongoing in the School Improvement Plan. The instructional technology and technology initiatives. We are fortunate to have four new interactive smart boards, in addition to all of the smart boards that are up and running from last year. We, I worked with Matt Joseph to determine what would be purchased and where the projectors would go. They, as soon as they were installed in February break, they were up and running. The week after teachers got back, they were excited about the technology and the use, and the kids were thrilled with the new technology in the classroom. We are expanding on curriculum initiatives with the Portland Public Schools Writing Program. Our foundations that was in all of our kindergarten classes are now moving to all first grade classes next year, and an additional five, no, I'm sorry, three second grade classrooms will have foundations due to funding I had in my budget this year for it, so that the two grade one classrooms that have it this year will be able to move into five classrooms instead of be limited just to two, so that that foundation continuum continues to second grade. We will also explore the social-emotional learning curriculum, and the committee that is going to put that curriculum together to implement into the Milford Public Schools. Curriculum planning also continues with our TCT time with teachers, our staff meetings, and the goal for it to be complete is January of 2018. We've made great strides and progress in the in-service days and the professional development that Kevin and Craig have afforded us as a staff. And another goal is for assessment, to develop common assessment consistency aligned with curriculum maps. And one example, we have everyday math, the math curriculum. All the classrooms do different unit assessments, and in the middle of the year, they do a mid-year assessment. One of, two of the grade one teams got together to create a rubric for that everyday math midterm, so that their grading is consistent across all of first grade. That was a collaborative effort of the, all of the first grade teachers in their TCT meetings, and they completed that right after February break. So, they were able to submit those scores, they are still submitting those scores, I'm sorry, will resubmit those scores at the end of the school year. Standard two in teaching all students. We continue to look at data-driven, data to drive instruction across all grade levels. And our focus program expansions are co-teaching classrooms, foundations that I mentioned before, and the self-contained EL classrooms. They continue to grow. Intervention specialists and tutors. We have, now have a math intervention specialist in his second year, and a third reading intervention teacher, which I was thrilled with. Thank you very much for those. It enables us to reach a larger audience of students that are struggling learners in math and reading. Standard three under family community engagement. With parent engagement and partnerships, we continue community outreach programs with PBIS initiatives, with fundraising for clothes, fund, clove, clothing drives and food drives, as well as PTO-sponsored events to develop a strong school community. Two new things we'll be adding into our school schedule this year is a grandparent reading day and a community reading day. We've also, I met with Lisa Burns and Cheryl Quinn earlier this week and spoke about a literacy program that we could initiate this summer to get more kids to read, and we called it Pages to Popsicles, where we're going to create a six-week program, one day a week, for students and families, or children of families, to come to Memorial Sites and Brookside Sites for an hour of reading. We'll have books for the kids to read. So, for example, Lisa might read one day, I'll read another day, and if the theme revolves around water, we can have water games to follow, along with popsicles. So, they read the pages, they get read to, they'll read books of their choice, and then we'll play, have a craft or a game, and then they'll have popsicles. It's a short time, 45 minutes to an hour. I'm going to ask for staff volunteers, but it's just another way to reach reading and getting these kids exposed to literacy over the summer months. We haven't decided the dates yet, but we're pretty excited about that. Our cultural, culturally proficient communication. Principal newsletters are translated in Spanish and Portuguese with the help of Google Translate and staff members who can read them to make sure that my possessive pronouns and adjectives and subjects go with the correct frame sentence. And the exploration of the thrift store and the community food pantry, that is, continues. We provide free snacks for our free and reduced lunch students through donations of the PTO. And also with the family bridges, it ties on to that. We've met three times this year, and our fourth meeting is May 23rd. We're going to be inviting the YMCA Summer Food Program. What this family bridges does is provide supplies for students who would not normally afford them at home, and I've been fortunate to have the PTO donate $2,000 towards the snacks for kids during the day, and they get a Ziploc that has markers and crayons and pencils, scissors to cut, and small books to color and read, so that these incoming kindergarten students that are entering kindergarten will have that practice time over the summer. We're just finishing our first year of that bridges program, along with Memorial School. Just helping families that need, could, could help to learn about the curriculum in the school, to help their child in their home language, and give them the tools to do so, to practice those fine motor skills, and to practice identifying letters and reading. The, the efforts of our two EL teachers, Anna Burt and Sylvia Fitzgerald, created a bilingual library, which provided books in home languages, and that we opened about a month ago. And we hope to expand on that as well. That was done through a grant that Anna Burt had written, and Astrid Barrios as well. Building-based professional learning communities and peer visits provide opportunities to create a culture where teachers learn with each other and from each other. We had an opportunity in April, staff meeting, to create peer visit, the first step of it, and what we did was we grouped teachers with K1, 2, teachers with a specialist, sent them to a classroom, and each of those teachers spent five to seven minutes in each of their classrooms and bragged about what they did in their classroom that they thought was beneficial to students. So, you had a kindergarten teacher, first grade teacher, second grade teacher, and maybe the school psychologist go to a kindergarten classroom, then they all traveled to the first grade classroom, the second grade classroom, and the school psychologist's office. So, everybody got to talk a little bit about their practice, and it opened some eyes for a lot of teachers that would never cross paths or meet, and some teachers said, "I've never been down to the kindergarten wing before." And this was in April of, you know, the probably fifth year teaching there. So, it was quite fascinating for me to see that interaction and excitement with staff. The alignment of professional development will align with curriculum, the current initiatives and standards implemented in this improvement plan, and our clean and safe, safe school environment is a constant priority. We have now the swipe cards for the staff and new badges for staff, so we have three access points for staff to enter the building, which before they used to have to, you know, they only had the front door to come in. So, that safety feature with only staff getting in has been huge. And they get to go in other buildings, too. Their swipe cards now work in other buildings, too. So, that was great. And that's our School Improvement Plan.
Any questions from the committee?
How many of those books did you get from the grant?
For the bilingual library? I think, they're quite expensive. I think we have about nine different, or maybe seven different languages and three or four books of each. I don't really have that number, to be honest.
You just got them recently?
Yes, about a month ago.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, as always. This is my, I think, fifth year, I think, of having you present, so it's great to see you again. Just a quick question for you. So, I'd love to see the improvement plans and all the extra work that you're doing, and seeing the continued integration of the staff. As you're moving forward and continuing to sort of improve functionality with the staff, education of the students, and everything else, how do you, what do you use from a benchmark perspective to kind of show, I guess, how do you know it's working? So, think about last year's improvement plan versus where you're going for this year. So, the plan that you just put in place, how will you know at the end of the day that it worked?
Well, through the intervention, the intervention piece for staff, I look at, I've looked at data from G-Mades in the spring, last year, the year before, to see progress, if there's any significant progress, especially with our at-risk learners. So, looking at data to help with the intervention initiatives. Actually implementing the community engagement days to get families involved, adding more activities so parents can be more involved with their students' participation in school. The curriculum initiatives are, which, that's monitored throughout the school year, to see that develop through the staff meetings and in-service days and curriculum planning that we do. It's, I guess, a monitoring of, through observations and evaluations, to make sure the new initiatives are carried out. I dedicate evaluation and assessments to particular curriculum time throughout the year, so two weeks I'll spend it on everyday math lessons, observing all teachers teach that particular subject. I'll dedicate it to public, Portland Public Writing, SFO Science, and I'll just focus my observations to see that they're carried out with fidelity. The, I've seen the family bridges grow from its initiation with, we've had it, first at Brookside, now participating in Brookside and Memorial meetings. It's great to see and to work together with Lisa to see it grow together, and have those families learn more about our schools. So, I guess it's data, observations, and meetings.
No, I appreciate that. I think, you know, one of the things I'd like to, and again, we can kind of talk about this later as a future agenda, and I think something that would be nice, that would be nice to see, and I won't put either of these on the spot tonight, is just seeing what the, from the data points that are being reviewed, what's the year-over-year progress that we're seeing in those data points? Where are the areas of opportunity where we may be able to help support the principals and their staff more, whether it's through budget, budget support or policy initiative, and seeing what that progress looks like? That's sort of, that's very data-driven as well. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions, please? The, the popsicle, what do you call it, pages of popsicles?
Yes.
Are you coordinating that with the feeding program, too? Is that a whole separate program?
I, no, this is independent, this will be independent from the feeding program.
Okay.
We could potentially, though, we hadn't, we hadn't gotten quite that far about what time of day, but it could potentially back up to the feeding program at either school, potentially.
Could be before or after.
Yeah.
Yeah. And are we doing the feeding program of both schools again this year?
I know it's at Memorial, I'm not sure.
I don't know if it's at Brookside.
Actually, Woodland this year. We're moving the summer programs to Woodland.
Okay.
But there is still a site at Memorial as well, but I, yes, yeah.
All right, so do I have a motion then to approve the Brookside School Improvement Plan? Motion from Scott, seconded by Jim, all in favor? All right, Mrs. Burns, you're up next.
All right. Thank you. So, thank you for having me here tonight, us here tonight. We, I, too, looked at the format of the School Improvement Plan after Mr. Kernan had shared it with all of us, and we talked a lot about having some, some big ideas and big goals, and really, instead of having so many goals, kind of paring them down and really trying to attack them and address them throughout the year and make it a little bit more manageable. So, it's definitely, it feels light, and it, it's definitely pared down from past years, and it is based on some of the goals that we've talked about as an administrative leadership team and some of the goals of the district, as well as priorities at Memorial School. So, similar format as far as having the four standards that our improvement plan addresses, starting with curriculum planning and assessment. One of our top priorities, again, moving forward this year, is getting interactive technology into each of the classrooms at Memorial School. So, our goal for, for next year is to make sure that all of our second grade classrooms have interactive technology, because they're moving into Woodland School, where they'll have that, you know, in all of their classrooms. So, that's one of our goals, is certainly interactive technology across the building, but, you know, finishing, completing second grade and then moving down to first grade and kindergarten. So, that will be a goal for us moving forward. Also, professional development around the instructional, instructional technology, and Dr. Joseph's been instrumental this year in working with all of the schools on professional development in that area for all of us. So, that's exciting. Curriculum development has been a, has been a big goal of ours this year. We started, we really started honing in on our curriculum development, mapping, and unit development this year. The teachers have been given parts of professional development days, parts of contractual days, and some of their team time to work on creating maps and units for each of the subject areas. And as Lisa said, they're, the teachers are really at the K2 level, I'll say embracing it. They're, they're moving forward really well with, with the, with the goals that we've set, and we've worked really closely with our curriculum team leaders, and it's, it's flowing very, very nicely, and they've made excellent progress. And again, we'll continue with that in the fall as well. Also, again, we will be looking at our tier-one interventions, our tier-one students. So, we've done a lot of work with, with having some support to create co-teaching classrooms in the, in our building, as well as Brookside focusing on what our EL students need, what children with special needs need. But this will, we'd like to really look at what all children need, and how can we make sure that the kids are getting what they need in the classroom, and what would that look like, what interventions are needed, and really help, help teachers with that, with that as well, through professional development. And then we move on to the next standard, which is teaching all students. That focus for us moving forward will be social-emotional learning, another huge area this year, or across the country, that everybody's talking about, social-emotional learning. And we will, as you know, there's a district Social Emotional Learning Committee that we're a part of. Professional development will be provided. There was some surveying, initial surveying of staff on kind of the social-emotional realm, and we have some goals moving forward that are really based around our relationship, building relationships. We talked about that at, at the leadership, at the leadership level as well. You know, us building relationships with teachers and teachers building relationships with students, and that really being important. And then we move into family engagement. Also, very important, we believe that, you know, the more that we can involve families, the greater success that students will have. So, we, we'd like to make sure that our communication is regular and often, and that we're providing opportunities that families feel welcome in our building, welcome at our activities, and really, next year, we'll be looking at ways to, to make sure that all families feel welcome. So, what is, you know, what's missing? Why do we sometimes not have, you know, great attendance at certain things? And then there's fabulous attendance at other things. So, what, how can we hone in on what, what those, what is needed? So, that will be a goal of ours as well. Again, we're working with staff to get them develop, working in teams. Right now, we have all of our grade level, all of our teachers are working in small teams, and our goal for moving forward is to try to make sure that our specialists, reading intervention, special education, EL, are also involved in those teams, because they have so much value, obviously, to add as well. And that's just a little scheduling. I look at Rachel, because that's her thing. That would just be, you know, kind, working through the schedule and making sure that the students are still getting what they need, but allowing time for the teachers to work together as well. And finally, the, we look at the, the safe, safe schools, I guess I would say. One of our, our main goals moving forward, which it's been for several years, years, is getting our playgrounds updated and safe, and we've made some really great progress with that. You know, we built the front playground last year, the kindergarten playground, and that looks fabulous. And now, as soon as that ended, we started working with the PTO to work to fundraise for the back playground. And as Joe had mentioned earlier, our, we're having a 5K on May 13th, and the proceeds from that will go directly to the playground. We're making some really great progress with it. We have great support from the School Department. Celebrate Milford has, they came to our PTO meeting last night and made a very generous donation towards our playground initiative as well. So, we're very appreciative of the community, the community help with that as well. And then, finally, the, the district as a whole, but Memorial is working on some crisis management plans through the, I'll have to look. There's like, an emergency operations team. Rachel actually is, is chairing it for Memorial, and they're, they're working on creating, we have obviously plans in place and protocols in place for emergencies, but really breaking them apart a little bit more, making, updating them, and, and adding to them. As, as times change, we're, we're adding to, we're responding to, to what's needed. So, and we'll continue to provide professional development to staff in that area as well. And that is the School Improvement Plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa?
Just thank you, as always. You know, nice job, both of you, tonight. And I know it's, of all the things that you do in the course of your jobs and career, this is not always the most fun, which I can't believe. But, no, just thank you, guys. I know it's, I know it's a lot to go through, and it's, and it's important, and I'll, I think, because we'll, we'll add it on as an agenda item, again, similar type of thing of, you know, how do we know it's working? It's just a question I have just in general, and it'll be for each school as we kind of go through. So, we'll hopefully add that on for future agenda items, because we want to make sure we're supporting, and that we're, we're doing everything we can to give you the resources that you need to continue to improve the education. And when I look at how it's working, I know the Department of Ed and all their infinite wisdom love to measure year-over-year growth, not per student, but per grade. So, well, last year, the second graders all got 90 out of 100, and this year, the second graders got this. Well, great, it's different students, it's different environment, everything else. I'd love to see point-to-point growth for those students as they carry through. So, this year's first graders, how did they improve from first to second grade? How did they improve from second to third and moving on and going forward? How, what can we do to help support that? So, just, you know, thank you both ladies for, for all the hard work, and certainly thank you to all of your staffs as well, one of whom is here tonight, for all the hard work and effort that we know that you put into this every year. So, thank you.
Except for that, his son's piano recital tonight.
It's no, it was not, it was not, it was not a slide, it was not an intended slide. It was just, it was, it was really just a thank you meant for all of your staff.
He said he'd rather be here. No, that's okay.
Is that with Mrs. Moffett?
I don't know. I, I don't know.
That's where my daughter is tonight, too.
My niece is at that, too.
So, it's got mentioned, we, we obviously recognize that there's a lot of work that goes into putting these plans together. So, I appreciate all the work that you, your staff, and the, the school councils did. You know, what I really appreciate is the collaboration among the two schools and the collaboration we have with Tim at Woodland as well. Just seeing the consistency in these plans and knowing that Tim's going to come in with a similar plan, I think is very beneficial for, for all of us. And I think it's important going forward that there be consistency, especially among those elementary schools. So, so, good job. So, do I have a?
Great. I just want to say thank you to you. So, thank you both, and you're both presenting, you're so calm in the way you're presenting, and I understand how your days aren't calm and all the things that get in the way of putting all this together. But I think that, kind of to your point, Joe, about the topics that you hit and the areas that you both touched on, these are the things that are so important right now, and definitely the social-emotional learning, and nothing else happens until we have that in place. But, everything with the curriculum examination and making sure that it's all put together in a thoughtful way for students. And on top of all that, I think we all know the family community engagement, and just hearing you really be thoughtful and reflective about who your populations are and what the challenges are in terms of getting them into schools, which is really difficult for some families, and helping them to feel welcome. Even the thought about giving up some of your summer to bring kids in and get them excited about reading, that, that's just so huge, too. And it also just speaks to the, kind of the wraparound services that schools offer now. We, we are much more than just a nine-to-three establishment, and you really demonstrated that through these plans. So, thank you.
So, do I have a motion to accept the Memorial School Handbook? Motion from Mike, seconded by Joey, all in favor? Thank you.
And I do just have to say one more thing.
Yes.
And I do just have to say one more thing. Rachel told me, I wanted to also say as, as part of our fundraising, um, we did have sponsors for our five K and, um, we were floored that our Milf- uh, the Milford Teachers Association, um, made an extremely generous donation and sponsored our five K race. And they made a, in the amount of a thousand dollars, which was, which was, um, really great. And, and we really appreciate the support from the Milford Teachers Association. And I think that says a lot that they were willing to, to sponsor it and, and know that the playground is so important to us and our students. And I think, um, we were just so pleased. So I, I did have to say that.
That's, that's fantastic.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, can, can we make sure we send a thank you note to the MBTA on behalf of that, for, to the MTA on behalf of the school committee as well?
Sure. All right. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the handbook for Brookside and, uh, Memorial School. Are you both gonna?
I, I think w- well, uh, if I can speak for both of us. Sure, us. We, there was not, um, many changes, as you could see from the, from the handbooks. Um, the only change was just our change in our elementary classroom placement notification. So, um, I'm sure you're all a-
You may want to reiterate that.
We're, what'd you say?
The viewing pa- I see, you may want to reiterate that.
Yes, so we are, um, we, uh, as, at the K five level, we are, again, working closely together, Lisa and Tim and I, to really make our placement and those decisions for, for next year, we're working together. We have a, the same letter that we're sending to families from K five level. Uh, maybe he's doing K four 'cause five might look a little bit different, but we're working together to, to have the same message to families about what placement will look like and that we will not be, um, assigning students play, um, their teachers until, um, August. I think the second week in August. Um, so we've been trying to get that message out to families because it will be a shift for, for, um, families that we've had in the past. But we think that it, it's important to, to wait because there is so much that can change over the summer with, with the population of students. And sometimes we get ourselves locked into classroom, classroom designs that, that maybe we wouldn't choose, w- if we were to know, you know, all the students that we were going to have. So we are waiting to, to, well, we, we will do placements with teachers like we always do, but it won't be announced because there will, there, there's a pen- potential for some movement over the summer. And that becomes extremely difficult once a, a child and family have already kind of established that, who their teacher is. So, so that is a big change, a big shift for, for our levels. Um, but again, we're really working together across both schools and with Mr. Carnan to make sure that, um, the same message is getting out and that we're being consistent.
And another thing that has k- is kind of bridging the K one, two schools to Woodland is working with Tim. Lisa and I are both working with Tim. Um, he, we're both working towards trying to get move up day, which is a visit of second graders to Woodland School. Um, Tim wants them all at once and Lisa and I are working with the preschools and Shining Star to make that coordinated effort. So we have the move up day all at once with all three schools. So, um, then, so they'll have that move up day together as grade two students to grade three. And then Camp Woodland Bound, which is a coordinated effort with Memorial and Brookside Schools that we had last year. It's like an outing for all grade two students to have a chance to meet Woodland students from, to meet their potential third grade classmates. So Memorial and Brookside second grade students get together for an event where we have music and games for them to play together, um, which is another opportunity to bridge all of these elementary schools together.
Kevin, on, along the lines of not communicating teacher assignments at the last day of school. Um, and I know obviously Lisa and Lisa and the staff have done a good job of trying to get that out. You've said at the last several school community meetings. Has that communication gone out to teachers throughout the entire district as well?
Uh, we've shared it. I've shared it in my monthly letter to both, uh, parents and faculty, probably two or three times. Maybe four times over the course of the year. So I feel like it's out there. Um, you feel like the teachers are pretty well aware of it in your buildings, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I sort, I sort of assume their teachers would know it. So it's more of just, uh, making sure it's pretty di- district communication.
And if, yeah, the middle, the middle and high school is different because of, it's just a different process. But for the elementary where shifting goes on up to the last, the, the day before school with high school schedules. But with, um, with the elementary, it's kind of an all at once kind of process.
The reason for my question was is a lot of the teachers who have students at one of those two schools, maybe teachers in other schools. And a lot of times it's the, they get asked by other people in the community. Hey, what's going on? You know, how come they didn't get their teacher assignments if they missed some of the other communication? Want to make sure that all teachers know it in case they, those other questions.
That's why we're trying to get it out as much as possible.
Perfect. That's what I wanted to just confirm.
That's a short, that's a short answer.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's always gonna be someone who-
There'll always be someone. There's no question.
About it, so.
Yep.
Um, okay. And, and that was really the only change, right?
Yes.
Yeah, seems like the only red line in here.
Yep.
And so do I have a motion to approve the handbook for Memorial and Brookside? Motion from Joey, seconded from Jim, all in favor?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I just want to commend the administration on the, the three elementary schools. You know, sometimes people and I consider you to be managers, to be honest with you. And sometimes people get in their own little islands and they want to do things their own way. To sit here tonight and hear how well all three schools are working together to, you know, make the educational experience of these children wonderful, I just want to say thank you very, very much. It truly shows you guys really care.
Thank you.
And thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Let's get that playground.
Yeah, I know.
All right. So the next agenda item is the, um, subcommittee appointments. Um, so, uh, just pull up my list here. Um, so for, for the most part, um, as we go through this, you'll, you'll find most of the committees are, are staying in intact. Um, so there, there are two committees in particular. Um, the Middle School East Committee, obviously there's no, no longer a need for that. So we'll, we'll be, um, disbanding that committee. And then the, the Technology Committee is, is well. Um, you know, I think we're in a good spot now in terms of our, our technology. We have, uh, Matt Josephs in place. Um, we, a lot of work's been done through the E-rate submission in terms of the infrastructure. We're obviously having a strong technology plan as well. And we have the Chromebook Initiative that we're working towards. So, um, I think Matt does a good job of getting in front of the, the committee on a regular basis and giving us an update. So, um, I don't think there's a need for that technology subcommittee anymore. Um, a couple of minor changes, so, so the Policy Committee. Um, Scott, I'm gonna ask you to serve on that committee and replace, uh, Mike on that committee.
With pleasure.
And then, um, Jim, I'm gonna ask you to serve in that committee as well, um, in, in place of myself. So it'd be Jen, Scott and Jim serving on the Policy Committee, if you guys are all okay with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then Scott, I'm also gonna ask you to join the Budget Subcommittee as well. Um, and so the Budget Subcommittee will be John and Scott.
Okay, great.
Uh, and then Mike, I'm gonna ask you to replace me on the Climate, Culture, Morale Committee, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, and then all the other committees will, will stay intact. So the, the Marketing Committee will continue to be, uh, myself and, and Jim. The Woodland representative, obviously Jen will, will continue to represent us there. Uh, and then the Long Range Planning Committee will stay intact. Uh, John, Jen and Joey will continue to represent us on, on that committee. Um, and then the Wellness Committee, uh, will remain intact, Joey and, and Mike will serve on that. Um, and I'll continue to serve on the Sick Bank Committee.
Great.
Um, so i- i- I don't know if the committee has any thoughts for any additional committees that you think there might be a need for at, at this time?
Nope, this is not it.
Okay.
No, great.
All right. So, um, we'll move forward with, with those changes. And next-
Mr. Chairman, if you could tomorrow have Melissa send those out in an email just so we have them all, or you can do it.
Yeah.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
All right. Next agenda item is the Report of the Superintendent of Schools. And we have the Middle School East materials, Declaration of Surplus.
Absolutely. This, this is gonna require a vote, Mr. Chairman. Um, and basically, um, we're ready to declare the items in Middle School East as surplus, um, minus the athletic equipment that is there, which we will be removing.
Okay.
So items or the building, as well as the building itself, correct? Is that what?
The building we already voted is, is surplus. It's the item within the building.
Okay, yep. For the future date. I just want to make sure we're reconfirming that.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So do I have a motion?
So motioned.
A motion from Scott. And I believe this requires a roll call vote, right?
Yeah, so you do a, you do a, you do a quick roll call and then you can do, and then we can take the vote.
And then take the vote, okay.
Yep.
And so we'll start over on this side. Jim?
Joe, just a quick point of order. We need a second for the motion. That's, that's correct.
There's a motion.
Yeah.
Yep, motioned.
Motion from Scott, seconded by John.
And now roll call.
Roll call vote. Sorry, nice catch, John. Um, so start off with Jim.
You'll get it.
Yes, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
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 All right. So the motion is approved, um, to declare the Middle School East materials, with the exception of the athletic materials surplus.
Correct. And we'll be setting dates for, uh, a, a day for the public to come in similar to what we did in Woodland, as well as we got ongoing dates with other town departments.
Okay.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, how much like athletic equipment are we talking about?
It's-
A closet or a gym?
Uh, I'd say probably the, the equivalent of a third of a gym.
Okay.
Throughout the building.
All that can be used by other schools or anything?
It, it, and currently used. So it's some, it's, it's cheerleading mats, it's, it's wrestling stuff.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, there's some pitching equipment in there too.
It's, um, a couple weightlifting, uh, machines.
Yeah.
Yeah. So some teams have used it for practices and equipment's still in there. We just need to remove it if there's been any issue.
Thank you.
And just as part of that, um, Rob Quinn will have somebody that will go in before it turns over to the town.
Absolutely. And we've already got that planned in place.
Yep. Excellent. So it'll be, as they call it, broom clean?
Correct.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is the search process.
Right. So I, I provided the, uh, committee a, a, like kind of a overview last time. I want to give you a little more detail tonight. Um, and I provided you a packet. We spent, um, Tuesday afternoon with the Milford High School faculty to get some feedback in terms of what they're looking for for the next principal. We also talked to them about, um, you know, any questions they have about the process and any questions they might have for the potential candidates as we go through the process. So I'm gonna run through the process really quickly and then talk about the details. So again, the position was advertised on April twenty fifth. We had the meeting this week on May second with the Milford High School faculty. The position closed, the posting closes on May ninth. The screening committee will meet on May tenth to identify semifinalists. The semifinalists will, um, be interviewed on the fifteenth and sixteenth. And we'll have a public forum and a site visit on May twenty third with the goal being a recommendation to the Milford School Committee on, on June eighth.
Do you have an idea of how many applicants you have so far?
Um, I would say we have a lot of interest. I don't want to throw out a number because I don't want to dissuade or, um, potential applicants.
Fair enough.
But we do, we, we do have a fair amount of interest in the position.
Excellent.
Yeah. I'm, I'm happy so far.
Good response.
Yes.
Great.
Yep. Uh, screening committee, again, May tenth, we're gonna meet at six PM. This is gonna be a, a fact, uh, committee made up of Milford High School faculty, administration and central office administration. Um, ideally in these searches, I tend to lean towards wanting to interview more candidates than fewer because I think you get a better picture. And we're shooting for hopefully ten to twelve to become semifinalists. Um, we're gonna have two interview committees and the way this is gonna work is one committee will be made up of faculty and administration. The second committee will be made up of school committee, parents, students and, um, central administrat- and administration. And basically Craig and I are gonna, um, switch each night. So one night I'm gonna be with Committee A, the second night I'm gonna be Committee B. Craig's gonna be the opposite. We're gonna serve as facilitators. And basically it's gonna allow the two of us to get, to, just to kind of hear the conversation that's happening connected to the interview so we get a sense of both committees. There'll be preset questions we've asked, um, the faculty and administration and department heads to provide, um, potential questions. I'd also encourage the school committee, if you'd like to email me if you have a particular question that you'd like to be asked of the principal candidates. If you could send it to me by Monday, that'd be ideal. And then again, the, the interview committees will meet basically from four to nine PM. There'll be two forty-five minute interviews, one for each ca- like one with each committee. So that each candidate is gonna basically be meeting for ninety minutes and switching committees halfway through. Okay? And then each member on the interview committees will vote for finalists with the best qualifications and the best fit for the Milford High School principalship. And the goal there is to identify, uh, two to three finalists, um, who'll move forward to the site visit process. Sometimes in a search you have two. I, I tend not to go, like to go beyond three, but sometimes you will have four, four potential finalists. I really want our finalists to be people that everybody feels pretty comfortable with in terms of a move forward. So the site visits and the public forum will be scheduled on May twenty third. Um, the timeframe, I'm not sure of yet 'cause it'll depend on the number of finalists, how we kind of schedule and structure the day. But the events that each finalist will have will be a site visit to Milford High School, whether visit classrooms, talk to students, talk to teachers. There'll be a faculty forum directly after school. There'll be a public forum in the evening where anybody from the Milford community can come in and ask questions of the candidates. Uh, and there'll be feedback, the faculty will provide feedback forums where they can kind of talk about their impressions of the candidates as well as for the public. And we'll incorporate all that feedback into the final decision. There'll be an administrator and school committee forum, similar to what we did with the, um, Woodland search. We'll have kind of a room and that'll be more of an informal conversation because it'll be a smaller group. I'm also gonna interview each candidate with probably a couple folks from central office as well as part of the process. And so we're gonna take basically the feedback from the screening process through the site visit and public forum and ultimately make our decision on the best candidate, who's the best fit for Milford High School. Broadly, we're looking for an instructional leader who's focused on student growth and achievement, who's also a tremendous culture builder, is, you know, just broadly. But we're gonna talk about the criteria as we're collecting it from the stakeholders right now. So, one of the questions that came up during the high school forum, I've got allergies right now, so every time I start talking for any length of time, it kicks in, um, was are we gonna do site visits of the finalists? And right now I'm leaning not to do that because, um, one thing that we've learned from just being part of site visits, when we've had candidates going to other places or other people have done site visits is if you really like some, somebody, you're very po- you know, you get positive feedback. If you really don't like somebody, you get even more positive feedback. Um, so we, I think we've got other ways to get a sense of a person's background and experience without necessarily doing the site visit. 'Cause it tends to be, from my experience, more of a dog and pony show than an actual valuable exercise. And it tends to be very time consuming on the he- part of the receiving district. And it takes a lot of resources from our district as well. And I don't think you get a lot of bang for the buck in this situation. So any questions about the process?
Uh, just, I, I'm, I'm glad to see it's a very thorough process. There's a, there's, it's a pretty thorough vetting process. Uh, multiple steps, lots of opportunities for feedback as well. I mean, I, I think your, your point is well taken, um, as far as, you know, the site visits. It's, um, and just kind of going back to when we were, when we were appointing you, Kevin, you know, when you're going externally for hiring an administrator, um, you, you, you sort of have two populations, right? So you have the rising star in another, in another district that's looking for another opportunity. Um, or you have somebody that may have had some challenges. Unfortunately, when you're interviewing those candidates and from the outside looking in and the letters of recommendation, it's, they're virtually identical. Um, i- i- it's, it's something that we've seen in the past. So I'm, I couldn't agree with you more that it tends to be a much more of a dog and pony show. Like you said, when it's somebody they like, it's really positive. When it's somebody they don't like, it's even more positive.
Right.
Um, so I think it's great. I, I'm very, very, very pleased and, and very excited to see this process go forward. So.
Great.
Does anyone else have any questions about the process? No? So the next item on the agenda is the, the appointment to the, um, the school committee appointment to the interview committee. Um, and so we ha- we have three members, um, come forward and expressed some interest in serving on, on the interview committee. And so I'm gonna appoint, um, Jen, Jim and Scott to that committee?
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And that's all for Kevin. So the next agenda item is the Report of Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
Uh, for the committee's approval this evening, we have, uh, five warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty-four cents.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Jim, seconded by Mike, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of eight hundred fifty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents.
Do I have a motion? Motion from John, seconded by Scott, all in favor?
The third warrant is in the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred ten dollars and seven cents.
Motion from Joey, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
The fir- fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty- The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
Motion from Jim, seconded by Jen, all in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred eighty-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Motion from Scott, seconded by John, all in favor?
Uh, I do have a request for professional development course reimbursement in the amount of four thousand six hundred seventy-six dollars.
Motion from Jim, seconded by Mike, all in favor?
Uh, the committee also has a list of the latest appointments from our previous meeting, uh, no vote is required.
Okay.
And that's all.
Thanks, Kathy. All right, next agenda item is subcommittee updates. We did have a policy meeting tonight. Jen, do you want to give an update on that?
Yes, um, we revisited the religious observance policy that's been on the table for a little while now. And we, um, made some final revisions to that policy that we will bring back to the committee for a, a first read, I guess, because it's, it's amended policy.
Correct. It is, it is amended policy.
At the June eighth meeting. We also began, well, we actually continued the process of looking at the acceptable use policy for technology. And we agreed that we need a little more clarification on that from Dr. Joseph. So he will go back and look at that, uh, so we make sure that we have all the pieces in place to bring that forward to the committee. I think that's as far as we got tonight.
Turf field, actually.
Turf field.
Turf, turf field forward for, for sure.
Yes.
As well.
Any questions for Jen, Policy Committee? All right. Thank you. All right, next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
To, to echo what Scott was talking about earlier about the improvement plans or the goals that these schools set their improvements. How, how do we track that? You know, how do we know they're doing it? I, I kind of want to add to what Scott was saying, maybe it was something that we could, I don't want to say grade these principals, but when they bring these improvement plans to us, show us what they did last year, what they accomplished and what they didn't accomplish. So we can kind of see what they're looking to do versus what they've done in the past. Um, I don't know if that's, that's almost what he's saying.
Yeah.
I think it's, I don't want to burden these guys with any more work than they really have to do, but.
What would we do if, if you don't mind me?
I think, I think it makes a great point. How do we know they're doing it?
And I think to, on top of that, I, I'd like to see, very specifically part of that, I'd like to see is data points. I, I, it's, it's anecdotal information is great. Data points are gonna be important as well. And I think it's, it's a, it's not one or the other, I think a combination of both. Some, but some really good, strong sort of data-driven information, some specific proof points of, hey, not just, I know the morale's getting better because everybody's smiling when they come in, but it's, I know the morale's getting better because of, I can point to this, this, and this as a, as specific examples of morale's getting better or math grades are getting better or, you know, just in general, with each school as we go forward here.
Yeah, one thing we can do is, perhaps as a full committee, is talk about formatting for the next year's, um, presentations and improvement plans. And, you know, I think it is valuable to have maybe a section on, hey, this is what we've accomplished in the last year. These are our new things, and kind of like what questions do you have about the data? Because the data should drive the next plan theoretically.
In the interim, because, and, and again, in recognition of the fact that these principals and assistant principals and the administration and the teachers, the amount of effort that these guys put into, this isn't something that they did today.
Right.
And they came and presented. It's, it's way more work than that. And we understand to ask them to add those pieces in for what Joey and I are talking about for this round of presentations is, is not fair.
Correct.
What I would like to see though is whether it's from you, Kevin, and Craig, or as we continue forward, as we begin next year, start to gather some of those data points and ask, and invite them to come back as part of their, um, whether it's kicking off of school and also just you and, maybe it's you and Craig doing a presentation of going school by school. Not every, not all, not every school in one meeting, but breaking it down. Hey, in this school, this is how we know, this is what we saw in the improvement plan, these are the data points here, the specific points that we point to. And be able to go through that and start to see that. I, I don't think it's something that we can wait a full year on. I'd like to see that, me personally, I'd like to see that information, um, more timely than that. Not with this round of handbooks with the folks that are still left to come. We realize that, you know, I want to recognize the fact, they might, they've already done that stuff. So let's, let's move forward and start to do that maybe during, starting over the summer and then going, going forward in the fall of next year.
Yeah, I, I think the, the key to that's gonna be identifying what those measures are, right? And so if there, if there are specific measures that, that you're looking for, certainly share them with the, the administration. And, and, you know, if, if, if that's where we're gonna go down, maybe you connect with the different principals and determine, okay, what, what are the key measures here? You know, how, how are we gonna monitor that progress? Because obviously, to your point, every grade's gonna be different, right?
Yep.
So we're not gonna really use something like MCAS kindergarten, right? So what are we gonna use to measure the progress there? And maybe it's G-made or, you know, whatever it is. But we have to be very clear with principals as to what we're gonna use as, as a measurement.
I, I mean, I, for me personally, I, I would say, you know, I would defer to Kevin and Craig of how does, when, when schools are being measured based on their successes and their strengths and their opportunities, what are those metrics? So the D E S E has their versions of, of, and metrics. I would say start with leveraging the D E S E and then start to leverage other use, other resources, whether it's test scores, test results. Obviously, when you get to high school, it's graduation rates and, and things of that nature. But, you know, I would, I would ask, you know, I would defer to Kevin and, and Craig and their level of expertise. They're the educational experts, I am not, I don't pretend to be. But, you know, I'd love to see what those results are and then how we can start to incorporate some support from there.
And I, I think that'd be relatively, because we're collecting data at every single grade level, it just varies by grade level what data we're collecting.
Right.
John?
Yeah, uh, Scott actually touched on it three times, um, when I was trying, not trying, but what I was gonna, when he first touched on it, I wanted to reiterate. Is it, is it appropriate for the principals to be bringing it to us as a committee or more so to, you know, the interaction through the superintendents and have Craig and Kevin be bringing this, this data to us? And again, you've, you've touched on it three times now, but, you know, I don't, I don't want to overstep our, uh, our scope.
Right. All right, we'll, we'll add that as a future agenda item, just to clearly define what it is that we're looking for as a committee.
Perfect.
Any other future agenda items? I just had, had one, um, I think we may have actually touched on it at the last meeting too, but I did extend an invite to our legislators, Representative Murray and Senator Fatman, uh, to see if they could attend our meeting on, on June fifteenth. So hopefully they're available, if, if not, we'll certainly work around their, their schedule. But we obviously want to have them in, start to have a dialogue regarding what's happening at, at the state level and how that has an impact on, on our community. All right, uh, any old business?
I just want, it, it popped into my head today, crosswalks, I know that Scott had talked about it. I mean, the school's almost over. I don't know if it's any, makes a big deal or not, but I, I drove by and you can barely see some of those in front of the schools. And I know there's crosswalks, uh, there's guards there too, but again, it just popped into my head today because I drove by three schools.
Yeah. Do you know, did anyone reach out to Highway Department about that?
Let me check with you tomorrow, because I think I did, but I don't, I don't remember the, the gist of the conversation. I can definitely get that information to you.
Okay. Any other old business? All right, um, we do have executive session today, uh, tonight, I should say, uh, for contract negotiations of the A F S M E. And I know we just went through this at the last meeting, so I'm gonna motion to adjourn, no.
No, you need roll.
Roll call first.
Roll call first for.
Then adjournment.
Then adjournment.
Enter into executive session and then adjournment. I'm gonna, I'll tell you, I'm gonna get this someday.
You will, don't worry.
All right, so do I have a, a motion to enter into executive session? Motion from John, seconded by Scott, and then roll call vote. Begin with Jen.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh-huh.
Yes.
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 All right, so motion passes to go into executive session. And now do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion from Mike, seconded by Joe, all in favor? Thank you.